I know my kids are, my kids are going to change, but in the same end, they seem to be molding up these young kids and sending them to camp.
Good evening. Go ahead and get your attention, we'll go ahead and get this meeting started. First of all, we anticipated we were going to do Facebook, or excuse me, YouTube live. For whatever reason, that's not connecting, but I will upload this at a later date. So, we won't be live or streaming tonight, and Jamie is posting that out, sorry about that. As a matter of introduction, I'm Charlie Gaston, the Mayor of the City Award. That's Robin Hefner, she's one of our City Council members. Also in the audience is Stacy McMahon, she's one of our council members. Stephen Hall is one of our council members. Nikki is our city clerk. Michelle is our park and recreation director, and Jamie is my right-hand person and is going to be taking notes and keeping time and all that kind of stuff. As a matter of agenda tonight, what I'm going to do is go over what this is all about, go with a couple of proposals we have, and then I will open the floor up for comment. We will ask you to limit your comments to the proposal tonight, or what you think we should be doing with this grant.
Three minutes.
And three, yes sir, three minutes will be your time limit, and that's one thing Jamie's going to be doing, is keeping track of time. I mean, keep it three minutes, folks, and we'll just, so we can get out. But I, anybody who wants to speak, if you have an opportunity to speak tonight, everybody who wants to speak, we'll have it too. So, let's go ahead and start. This matching grant, by the way, this public hearing is a requirement for the grant process. And first of all, thank you for coming out. Absolutely. I love it. Dialogue between your government and you is vitally important, especially in person, not on Facebook or other things. So I appreciate you coming out tonight, and whatever position you want to take, we appreciate. Oh, by the way, Tommy Bond sitting over there is our engineer on the projects. So if there are any questions about that kind of thing, I'll defer to him. So, the outdoor recreation 50/50 matching grant is a reimbursable matching grant that's administered by the Arkansas Department of Parks, Heritage, and Tourism. This grant provides financial assistance to applicants who wish to increase outdoor recreational activities, opportunities in their community. The purpose of the meeting is to identify potential outdoor park and recreation needs and priorities for 2025 for the City Award. Following the identification process, city officials will select those priorities to be submitted to the Arkansas Department of Parks, Heritage, and Tourism for a matching grant application. Up to $250,000 is available. Next Tuesday night, City Council will have an opportunity through resolution to decide on which project, if any, they decide for us to put forward. The council could say they don't want to do anything, and we'll stop it right there. We'll have, they'll have an opportunity to make that decision Tuesday night. The proposals that we have come up with, first one would be the Willow Lake improvements with a parking area, fishing dock, or the Busby Lake improvements with also a parking area and a fishing dock. To start off with, with the Willow Lake improvement, I think you've all seen this, this is the area which we are talking about putting a parking area and a fishing dock on Willow Lake. Couple pictures of what it looks like, you all know what it looks like, you live out there. And then this is the engineering drawing mock-up on this with a fishing dock, totally ADA, because that's one thing we have to do, has to be ADA compliant on all this. So this will be totally ADA compliant. Cost estimates, 117,000, almost 118,000, 59,000 for the city, and $59,000 for the grant, if approved. Let's also remember that this grant will be, it's competitive with virtually 500 cities in the state. Virtually everybody can apply for this. And there's, I don't know how much money is being given out, but it's not a guarantee, maybe you put it in, that you're going to get it. Second one is Busby Lake Improvement Area. And if you've been over Busby Lake, that's the parking area, especially if you've been over there for a fishing derby, you've seen it over there. And we're looking at doing basically the same thing with parking area, much larger parking area, and create a new fishing dock off of that. And again, it's ADA compliant, so everybody can use it. That's our two, let me go forward, estimated cost, and that's 319,370 with 160,000 basically for us and for the grant. Now, I want to open the floor up, and I welcome your comments, and again, let's keep them at three minutes, just one at a time. Whoever wants to go first, come up, please, when you come up, come up, introduce yourself, and please tell me if you live in the Willow Lake area or somewhere else, so we just kind of have an idea of where you live.
My name is Leslie Allen, I live in Willow Lake area. I live at 112, right across from where the proposed parking lot and fishing dock is.
Okay.
I do not want that in my front yard. Y'all, I've called the cops, there's supposed to be a restriction on there from sunset to sunrise, nobody out there. I've called, we can't do anything about it. You're going to decrease my property, increase my insurance value to where I have to pay more liability, and it's just a matter of time before somebody gets hurt out there, and then the City Awards is going to get their butts sued.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Hey, Michael Young, I spoke to you last month, and along with Ryder in the back, I want to thank him, we both kind of headed up. I would like to thank we're responsible for a lot of people being here tonight.
This is great.
Along those lines, I would like to ask the City Council to communicate with the community better, because a Facebook post is not going to get it done. A lot of these people, and we talked to probably over 90 houses out there, and most of them had no clue that this meeting was happening. So, yeah. So, now, to get back on track, first of all, thank you for even considering Willow Lake, because it's, you know, it is a resource for the city, it's already public, but you're going to hear a lot of concerns about that, so before, I'm kind of off track, because originally, when I wrote this, I wanted you to consider Busby Lake, and then, of course, you posted a few days ago, hey, Busby Lake's on the, you know, so.
I beat you to the pump?
Please pursue Busby Lake instead of Willow, I think there's.
Well, I'll tell you. Yeah. I'll tell you what, I heard opposition, I've had several phone calls, emails, and other things, and so we got to thinking about, what alternative can we do? And so we're going to, that's why we're here, to discuss both alternatives, or whatever ideas y'all may have.
Yeah, and you may remember, last meeting, I talked to you about getting that mowed.
Sure.
It's been mowed three times since then, thank you very much for that, it looks so much better.
And I told you then, we had not been taking very good care of that, and we promised to do better, between Michelle and our street department, we will do a better job at that, I can promise you that.
I just now have staff.
Yes, we now have full-time people in parks and recs.
Well, I just want you to know, it is appreciated, because it.
We will, we will keep doing that.
Aside from Busby or Willow, just in the future, or even for this grant, what you've done at the ballpark, I like, I'm seeing upgrades there, that's good. Playing service could probably use some help.
What service?
Pickleball, playing surfaces of the.
Oh, we have, we're working on those.
Okay. Pickleball, basketball, stuff like that, people are into, so just potential stuff. And then, as far as cost you were talking about, be aware that this isn't just a one-and-done cost, you're going to have maintenance and stuff, because I don't, if you do something at Willow Lake, don't let it turn into Busby, because it, that, it looks awful over there. And so, that's why I think the improvements at Busby are more of a priority for the city than adding something new. So, resources, all that good stuff, hell, I'm on time.
You're about, you're about there.
All right, I will, if I can, I will, I've got about a 10-minute speech that I will email you.
Just email to them.
And, but, you know, just, Busby, it's already there, fix it, make it presentable for the city, and then, you know, we see maintenance there that's getting done.
Thank you.
We may be more inclined to have something in our neighborhood, but right now, vote no.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please. We're not going to be fighting over who speaks next, okay?
Hi, my name is Deondra, I live in Willow Lake, I've been there since 2013. I used to be a police officer, so I don't like the traffic at all. People just fly down there, when my patrol car was there, a lot of people would slow down and actually stop at that stop sign right there in Helen and Willow Lake, but it's not there anymore, so, but, I still am certified, so, let y'all know. So, but, my concern is safety, I actually pulled a couple of police reports from the last three years.
Sure.
And where I pulled for suspicious vehicles, suspicious persons, breaking or entering, whether it be vehicle or structure, just anything that's just odd, and it was, it was quite a few, but I will say, in my experience, I've done several calls, several hundred calls of breaking or entering of a vehicle and theft of property that don't get reported. So, a lot of times, you know, they'll rummage through the car, maybe take a couple quarters or something like that, and then, no one wants to report that, they're like, oh, that's not worth making a report. And so that's a lot of times that doesn't get reported. So just because this stack is small over the last three years, doesn't mean it didn't happen. And a lot of times, it's happening back there by the lake, and I've noticed that since I moved in. So, and I hate that for the people back there, but I will tell you this, don't leave anything in your car, backpack, anything, because anything they see, they're going to take, it doesn't matter if it's just paper, or toys, or whatever, they're going to take it. So, but that's my biggest concern with traffic, with, with more traffic, more people, and then they're looking around thinking, oh, we have some options for getting property. I would like to see some speed bumps, not the, you know, really evasive speed bumps. You had a question?
No.
Oh, I thought you had your finger.
I think, I think we got done, but keep on.
Yeah, well, because, you know, like I said, people speed through there, and it's just, we have children, I don't have children, but other people have children, and they're, you know, riding their bikes and things like that, and it's just kind of upsetting to see people just fly through there and do that. But other than that, I just would like to see a little bit more, a little bit more safety through there.
Okay. Let me just tell you a couple of things, in your experience, were most of the BNEs on cars, were they unlocked?
Yes.
That's, that's our, that's our problem.
Well, because, and there's some officers that will tell you, leave them unlocked so they don't break your window.
Right, whatever.
Okay, whatever, I don't, I mean, I don't say that, but, yeah.
I just want to, and okay, and also to that point, and just so everybody understands and knows this, we have just recently installed three of our four license plate reader cameras. And if you're familiar with those.
Yes, I am.
They're, they're a set of eyes 24 hours a day that the cops don't have. And with license plate readers, it's not looking at you, it's literally looking at the license plate. And if somebody has a stolen or a, whatever vehicle from Little Rock, North Little Rock, there's all kinds of cities we're connected with, and it passes through our city, our on-duty officers, detectives, me, chief, we all get immediately texts that that vehicle's in the city. And if our officers are free to go try to find that vehicle, great, and you know how that works.
Been there, been on a chase, there's two, yeah. So where are they located, where are they going to be located?
Well, there is one, right across from Big Red.
Okay.
Well, Circle K, excuse me.
Yes. That's a good spot.
Down at Old Austin and Peyton Street.
Okay.
Down on 367, near the dog pound is where one will be installed.
That's a good one.
It was right outside city limits, we had to get the county judge's permission, but got it. And then there's one on 367 north as you come into the city.
Okay.
So we have the city very well covered with four cameras, and they're working. We had a vehicle the other night, came through, stolen vehicle.
Yes.
It entered in our city. Unfortunately, our officers were out on another call, couldn't get to it, but the point is, that's another set of eyes.
Mm-hmm.
And the other point is, is those of you with Ring cameras and other cameras like that, and you've called us, you've said, I got a partial plate, now we can use that. If there's a partial plate, partial color, you can notify us, notify CID, and we could potentially enter that into the system, and potentially, you know, stop that from happening again. They're a great tool, I'll be honest, Robin brought those up to us to begin with, that was her idea, I was not for them to begin with, I am 100% for them now.
Yeah.
After we did some research.
I agree, yeah. And to someone that says it's not our job, I get that, it helps the investigation. There have been many times where we found something else, because someone had a camera that was pointing towards someone else's house, so.
Well, those Ring cameras won't pick up the license plate. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, since you brought that up.
Awesome, thank you.
Oh, it's Robin.
I just have a quick question. With the city owning the lake, would it be considered a park?
It is a park.
Can we have one sign?
Oh yes, we're working on that.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you another thing, with it being a park, Level 3 and Level 4 sex offenders cannot live within 2,000 feet.
I was against it, by the way.
Pardon me?
I was against it, by the way. I didn't know any of that, just wanted to let you know.
I do know that. Okay, anybody else?
Oh, yeah.
That sounds onomatopoeic.
My name is Charles Robertson, I live at 108 Willow Lake Drive.
Yes, sir.
I kind of work in engineering myself, you know, tucking that back in a subdivision, where Busby's out there on the main thoroughfare, you know, creating that in that deep in a subdivision is not a good idea. Myself, you know, everybody that lives there, seven people that are directly in contact with the water's edge, the parking lot, the whole nine yards.
Uh huh.
I've measured it, there's 29 feet from the water's edge to the curb of the road.
Okay.
There's 91 feet from water's edge to my 13-year-old daughter's windows.
Thanks, sir.
So, just doing the measurements, you know, a standard parking spot, you need 20 to 21 feet, you need a curb stop, that's going to be two foot off the end of the parking, the, so, to build, you're going to have to build into the pond.
Correct.
For the walkway. So even still, that 91 feet from my daughter's window gets increased by what, 12 feet? You know, so please take that into account, the people that have the direct contact, you know, not living on the other side of the neighborhood, you know, they, they don't want the traffic, think about the people that are in direct contact. I've got spotlights shining through my windows right now at 1, 2 o'clock in the morning, pictures to prove it. And it's minimal, and I get it, it's going to be worse if we do this.
Thank you, sir.
So, I appreciate it, thank y'all.
Thanks, sir.
I agree with Mr. Young, the communication as far as to the, us as a community, ideas and everything else, that if we can elevate that a little bit, be much appreciated.
Can I, can I address that?
Sure.
First of all, now with the, you know, with Facebook, that seems to be the best way to get information out to everybody. If we may do mailers, we have learned, I get the owner trash, nobody reads them. Neighborhood Facebook page is your admins, if they will echo what we put on our Facebook page, helps a lot. There's also a signup, where you can sign up for text alerts from the city. And whenever we put out something, we put it out on a text alert, whether it's a road closure, or this meeting, goes out. So I'd encourage you to go to our Facebook pa, or excuse me, our website, and sign up for those text alerts.
Okay.
That's one way to do it.
That's fair enough.
But the best way to do it is, just like you're doing, neighbor to neighbor.
Yes, sir.
Because then you get to know your neighbors a little better.
Absolutely. Like I said, just please consider the people that are closer contact.
Yes, sir.
You know, than some of the ones around the neighborhood, you know, just please take that into account.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. I told you, everybody gets a chance to talk.
Hi, my name's Kiri, I'm layer, we live at the corner of Lakeside and Willow Lake.
Sure.
We have been there since '09. Outside of our door are three stop signs that we see ran numerous times daily by people that live in the neighborhood, and it's not always purposeful, but my worry and concern is the amount of people that aren't familiar with the neighborhood that are going to come through there. And we have a lot of younger families there that have moved in now since we've been there, our kids are 29, 30, and 31, so they've moved out, and we've enjoyed fishing there for years, but, all that to say, the kids that are there on their bikes and walking with their families, almost daily, I can watch one of them get hit just walking through the neighborhood, because people coming through there. Just my other concern would be trash in the neighborhood, things like that, and I was sharing with Ms. Hefner, when we bought the property in '09, our bill of assurance says that it's only open to people that reside in the neighborhood, so, when we contacted the city many, many years about getting it mowed, we were always told, you need to call Mr. Gian Balvo, he's the developer of the property. So, I'll be honest, it's news to me that you guys have purchased the property, that's.
We didn't purchase, it was deeded to us by, by that developer.
Okay, well, that's, that's news to me, and that goes back to the communication piece, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm a principal in Cabot, so I know all about communicating with people, we have to communicate daily. If you're not telling the story, someone else is telling it for you, and I'm telling you right now, the story is that you guys have not taken care of that property, and it's, the retail value of our homes are going to go down because of it. So, thank you.
And I will tell you this. I agree. I agree, we have not taken care of that property like we should, and like I said earlier, we are doing a much better job, and we're going to continue to do a much better job with that.
Howdy.
Howdy.
My name is Stephen Ferris, I live at 14 Lakeside Drive. For the record, I am opposed to the current plan for development of Willow Lake Pond. You all call it a lake, it's a pond. All right? I have certain concerns.
Okay.
Number one, there are three entrances to a self-contained subdivision. Pintar, you cannot get a Mini Cooper through there. Opal and Helen, I ask, could you get a fire engine, not a fire truck, a fire engine and an ambulance through there at the same time? You cannot. All right? You cannot. Honestly, I haven't read all the codes and the sub-ordinance and this and that, so I don't really know yet, I'm not that well-prepared to deal with those, but, three entrances to a subdivision, I know I'm chewing up my time.
You're right.
Why would you build a city park, I know the city owns it, in the bowels of a subdivision? Why? All that traffic's coming in, we've already talked about the crime, we've already talked about the other issues, the lighting, who's going to put a porta potty there? Who wants a porta potty there? Raise your hand, who wants a porta potty?
Well, we wouldn't do that anyway.
Okay? Who is going to handle the fishery? You are going to put in a fishing pier, which I love, because I fish that pond. Where I live, my neighbor has given me opportunity to walk across his land to go fish. Have I caught fish there? Yes. Have I, I think you've seen me, have I also taken a trash bag and picked up trash around that pond? Yes? All right. So my biggest issue is traffic.
Sure.
Right? It's going to be, you're coming in, you're not, we have an emergency, how are you going to handle it? Actually, the first issue should be budget. Based on your 2024 budget, you have allocated, not you, I'm sorry, the city has allocated $120,000 to parks and recs.
And your time's up, sir.
I'm sorry?
Your time is up, sir. But I'll address the budget.
Oh, okay, can I, my wife, can I use your time, your three minutes?
Go ahead, hey, Stephen.
Can I use your three minutes? Can I use anybody else's three minutes?
All right, go for it. Go for it.
Thank you. Budget, I'm sorry, yes, I used up my time, I'm very verbose, I may not talk too much, just ask my wife. Budget, 2024, you budgeted $120,000 to parks and recs.
Sure.
You have a $98,000 carryover. Where are you going to get the budget for that? Granted, a 50/50 grant, that's sweet. If I could get a 50/50 investment on my personal account, I'd buy that every day. Right?
Right.
I mean, you put in 50 cents, you get 50 cents back, that makes a lot of sense. Okay, so, I am opposed to the current proposal for Willow Lake. Come up with something else. Now, let's talk Busby. I fish Busby all the time. The park benches are about to implode. If you look at the structure underneath, they're about to fall. We don't really have, there's some eh, marginal people that show up, I question why you would have Wi-Fi there, some people don't have Wi-Fi, that's a good thing, okay. I'm okay with that. Cleanup, I take the trash bag every time I fish that place.
Thank you.
Why? The little worm containers? Eh. The plastic water bottles that go into the ocean that we all read about? The straws that end up in the nostrils of turtles? Who cleans it up? I've seen the mowing, oh, let's go back to Willow Lake. Thank you for mowing it. It should be maintained better.
I said that.
All right? Now, Pintar.
You're about done.
When's the last, oh, my time's, second time's up. Anybody want to give me another time, another three minutes? Another three minutes? Okay.
It's all right, it's all right.
Pintar.
All right, it's your last time, and then we're going to move on to Spidey House, okay? Go ahead, Pintar.
You got it, boss.
Thank you.
You got it. Pintar, when's the last time you mowed it?
Pintar?
Yeah, the street. Yeah, when's the last time it got mowed?
I don't know.
Well, you're the mayor, tell me.
I don't know.
Well, why not? All right? The, the water drainage, when's the last time it got mowed? I'm going to take 30 seconds to pause. Again, in conclusion, I am totally opposed to your current plan for Willow Lake, Willow Lake Pond. However, I am really interested in improving Busby, okay? And the sports complex. What a beautiful place. But from what I understand, because I don't play ball anymore, because I'm old and decrepit, but I understand the field could be done a little better, the mowing could be done a little better, I don't know, I may be wrong, your mayor, your honor, justice of whatever. Anyway, there, I have taken up 12 minutes of your time, you know where I stand.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate your time. And I appreciate those who yielded the time to Mr. Stephen. Yes, sir.
My name's Jared Williams, and I live at 93 Willow Lake.
Yes, sir.
We moved here about three years ago, just because it was quiet back there, and that's what we liked about it, and I'm opposed to putting anything back there, because, you know, I got babies that play outside, just like everybody else does, and the thing that we worry about is a whole lot of crime and traffic, because there are cars that fly through there, and I know the fine gentleman we have that are on the police force, I know, we see them driving through every now and then, but I can only imagine how much more, you know, time that is going to be taken away from legitimate problems, you know, if they put that in over there on the suspicious calls, because there's vehicles that stay over there, that have been over there all hours of the night, when it's supposed to be shut down, you know, there has been people shining lights over there and everything else, and I mean, if we could, you know, the street lights over there need to be, you know, up kept, because I think one of them over there doesn't work or anything like that. But I'm just against it, because, I mean, I feel like the crime, trash, and everything else, I mean, I got a lot of respect for you guys for trying to do it, but I would want it to go more towards Busby, since it's over in the main part of town, and everybody can see it versus it being back there in the subdivision where everybody's kids are outside playing. But the number one thing, like I said, that is about the traffic and the crime back there, because we've, the reason why I moved here three years ago is because it was quiet, and there wasn't a lot of cars back there, and putting all that parking and everything in over there is just going to cause a whole lot more traffic back there, so.
Thank you for your input.
That's it. Thank you.
I will tell you, if you notice a street light out, give the office a call, Jamie will contact First Electric and we'll get it fixed. Jamie will contact First Electric and we'll get it fixed. I don't know. Anyway, go ahead, I'm sorry.
My name's Kristi, I live at 26 Willow Lake and my main concern is the traffic and the crime. I have a child that rides his bike, we live in a quiet neighborhood. All of our neighbor, neighbors walk their streets with their dogs and their kids. We don't have sidewalks, so we are in the streets. Um, so with more traffic through there, it's more of a chance of someone getting hurt. Are these kids that get off the school bus and they're walking home by themselves and you have all this extra traffic in there? Or in the mornings getting on the school bus and you have people going to fish early and it's dark? Even with streetlights, sometimes it's dark according on what time of the year it is. And you already have to worry about people driving through there. But if you increase it with people who don't know that there's kids standing on that corner, then there's a bigger chance. Busby Lake is right in the middle of our city, why not beautify it? We go to the fishing tournament there, the parking is horrible. I went down there the other day, the embankments are dangerous, there's not a good fishing pier. The little gazebo thing could use a lot of work or even a restroom there, something, you know, that would beautify our neighborhood where other people can see it driving through town, not having to drive through a secluded neighborhood where people like it quiet and clean. The fishing area, whenever we do walk by there, there's always trash. People are parked in, up in the dirt, blocking people who live in that area from backing out of their driveways or pulling out and possibly hitting a kid because they're having to walk around cars to get down the road. So just think about it with, you know, the safety of the people who live right next to the, the lake and the ones of us that don't live next to it, but still have children that play back there. So that, that's my main concern and to make Busby beautiful and let the other people in the city see it.
There you go, thank you very much.
Hello. Oh, let's see, we can fix that. Uh, my name is Lacey Acker. Um, I live at 111 Willow Lake. So I am one of only two houses that have multiple sides of our house surrounded by the lake.
Yes.
So, a little bit of a unique perspective for us. Um, we purchased our house in 2015 and we were told too that it was a private lake at that time. Uh, my children were younger, so we were really excited about having that opportunity for them to grow up with a little bit of nature, but still have the city life. Um, I wanna inform you of some of the things that we've experienced. Uh, to start, our dogs have been poisoned, people are throwing trash in our backyard. And then if we're not out there, naturally the dogs are getting a hold of these things. We go to let them in and then we see whatever it is. Um, people are throwing their furniture in the lake. And you're nodding your head, but I, my house is directly next to it and it's not eight feet from our bedroom window. So I go out, I pick up the trash. Um, we actually got in trouble by your city code enforcement officer because we picked up these massive items and sat them outside of our fence. And he came by and said, that, that has to go. Where does it go? There's nowhere for us to take that. Do you want me to throw it back in the lake? Well, no, because then you're, you're the problem, you're the reason it's sitting there. Okay, so I had to pay someone to haul these things off. So I did not pay the city for a fine.
Sure.
And it was like, which fee do I wanna pay? We didn't really have an option. Um, you were talking a lot about like the, the crime in the city or in just our neighborhood. Um, we have had somebody walk into our house, our garage door was open. We are avid motorcycle riders, I think a lot of you see us. Yeah. Um, and we literally left with the garage door up and our kids were home, which are teenagers, by the way. Um, and some stranger literally walked into my house, my dogs chased them out. My son called me while we were on the bike, I wear an Apple Watch type thing so I can communicate. I called, we came home, um, we reported it to the police and the response was, they were on foot and they ran out, like, there's nothing we can do. Okay, so I would like to show you what. You got it? Right there. And then, we have two vehicles which were locked that have been broken into. So I don't know, you might have those too. Um, but I'd like to show the council what has been proposed and what we are seeing from our perspective. This is what you uploaded.
Yeah.
That's our house.
Okay.
And then your markers, that's where the parking lot is supposed to start. You see my driveway and my car? Just. It is literally going to start next to my house, my two trash cans cannot fit there. And then, if you look over here, this is the backyard, it will cost us another $17,000 to fence in the rest of our backyard because it is eroding. Nobody is helping us to keep people off of that. So they come into our yard and then they throw things into our fence and then they're poisoning our animals.
Okay.
Um, you see that little pylon there? And then there's the lake. That is less than three foot for someone to have to walk on the city's land. So, I don't know, do you, I propose to you, if you go through with this, is somebody going to pay to put up our fence? Or is somebody going to send someone out there that's going to monitor that and keep my family safe and our animals cuz I'm expecting my first grandchild? I'm, this is, yeah, thank you. But it's like, these are the concerns that we have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, I do have.
One, one, all right, what else?
One quick question.
Okay.
So my question to the city of Ward's council members is, if you move forward with this project, can you guarantee us in the Willow Lake community that the traffic and people it brings in will not further increase crime and vandalism? And if so, how will you keep our families, our homes, our land and our property from being affected?
Thank you very much.
Hey, how are you? I'm David, I live in 97 Willow Lake.
I'm sorry, I didn't say your name once, sir.
David.
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 Thank you.
So, uh, I think y'all should do something with Busby Lake because if, if y'all turn it, Willow Lake into a park or something like that, you'll, you'll, you'll have all these weird people coming over sleeping on the new dock, just like over at Busby Lake. And which y'all have a problem with that all the time and y'all said y'all have cameras. But, and another thing, just wondering if y'all can just light up Willow Lake with better lighting instead of these dim lights?
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Thank you for coming. Uh, my name is Ryder Ugaldi, I live in 106 Willow Lake Drive. I've been there for two years. Um, allow me to submit you the, uh, the signatures of the petitions from all the homeowners and residents from the neighborhood.
When it's all said and done. That's all right. When it's all said and done, you can give me a petition.
A lot of items pretty much are being covered by this. Um, I will tell you, sir, as a nine-years board of director of precedent for the HOA in Las Vegas, I've bought multiple houses with massive experience and a lot of situation. And I'm all for the project, but I think, in a nutshell, it would take a lot of money to really well, go keep it that pristine condition. It's a money pit in a nutshell. Um, let's see here. You don't have any revenue coming in to pay for all of these. I mean, I'm looking at my property tax, which is asking me to collect a, a thousand dollars for this. Um, the ward, the city ward is asking, I was getting, receiving about $82 and then another hundred, fifteen dollars, about a hundred dollars per home on that location alone. You don't have the finances, you really don't. I believe, sir, as well, in 2011, uh, in your website, you have project number two, which you did a city asphalt overlay on the street. You had deemed and declared to be completed. No, sir, it is not complete. If you look at Willow Lake Drive, the entire loop of Willow Lake Drive has not been repaid.
Correct. That was not in that project.
And, and correct, and therefore you already deemed that on the website, it's been completed. So, I mean, all of this, sir, is possible. The question is, have you submitted all of this preliminary project to get a reserve study outside agency to know exactly how it's gonna cost regarding all this maintenance on this, all these items? And you look at your cost analysis, it's not there, you don't have it. So it's very concerning and when you have a property like this and you don't maintain it, sir, everything will go down the drain, uh, in terms of value. Just for the record, since I've been there for two years, sir, August, it's actually almost two years from now. I'm the one who's been cutting the grass in front of the lake for the last two years. Every month.
Not on my side. I haven't seen you cut it on my side.
The entire side of it, and two times in the summertime, which I don't mind, it looks great, it looks like a golf course. And I really, I mean, I love this community very, very much. So it's really great, thank you so much.
Let me address a couple of things that have been brought up. This month, back this Tuesday, in front of city council, there's two different ordinances. One ordinance is about speed bumps and how citizens can request speed bumps. There has been no procedure for that ever, other than somebody comes and say, we need speed bumps in X area. That's debatable. This ordinance, if passed by city council, will set the, the requirements on how you, uh, request a speed bumps and the petition you propose to your, your, uh, citizens for on that particular street and then bring it forward to the city council. That will help us with the process of getting speed bumps. Prior to that, pretty much, it's up to me. Well, I'd like it to be a little more of a process that we have input from everybody who lives on that particular street that, that you want that speed bump. And we'll go from there. Also, somebody brought about sleeping. Oddly enough, we have an ordinance I'm bringing for city council this month, next week, about sleeping in public places because the Supreme Court has ruled and allowed, uh, citizen or municipalities to now enforce that. So we have a, a ordinance going forward to city council. If they pass that ordinance, it will outlaw sleeping on public places. That gives us some teeth. Can do that too, but this is a whole different, just. Supreme Court, it, it really stemmed from northwest United States, up in Oregon area where they've had really, really bad problems with, uh, vagrants and, and homeless and they were allowed to go in, Supreme Court ruled on that. Allowed them to go in and take care of it. Probably so. All right, anybody else like to come forward and speak on this issue? Come on.
Yes, my name is Carol Carnafell and I live at 32 Opal.
Okay.
I have been there 18 years and 18 years ago, we were told this was a private lake. That's why my husband and I built there was because it was a private lake. Well, then Phil Giambavo and Cliff Hicks turns around and gives it to the city. We've had, before we all put fences up, we had people cutting through our yards and we've had to put fences up. I don't want this riffraff in my subdivision. I don't want the drugs that are gonna come because Ward has a big enough drug problem as it is. Without having drugs around the lake, oh, I'll meet you at the lake and we'll have, so I'll make you a deal and I'm not in the mood for that. I would just as soon put my house on the market and leave Ward as to put up with that. Nobody's got, I have not seen a police car in my neighborhood and I can't tell you how long. There is many other problems that, that the city is not taking care of. My neighbor has gravelled his backyard and parks cars back there because he has a shop that he runs out of his house and nothing's being done about that. I have ruins in my yard because they're from his yard. Nothing's being done about that. Cars parked on the road with no license plates. I called the police, they said, well, there's not a lot we can do about it. And then you wanna know, no one, in last July, I had to go to the hospital. They called an ambulance on me. The ambulance could not get down the road because there was cars parked on both sides of the road. Now, heaven forbid, that's a life and death situation. It wasn't for me, but it's, you're not following city ordinances by taking care of things that should be taken care of. I don't feel that somebody should let the grass in their backyard get three foot high and then park cars all over it because he's running a business. I thought with the bylaws from that subdivision, nobody was allowed to have a business. I understand there's somebody out there that has a garage, that has built an apartment above the garage and he's renting out the apartment. That's dual residency, you're not supposed to do that. But I would like to see things done before you even think about turning the park or the lake into a park. It's just, I don't want the traffic, I don't want the riffraff, I don't want strangers in my neighborhood. I am totally against this.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Let me make a comment, let me make a comment on builder's assurance. The city cannot enforce builder's assurance. That is up to you, the, who lives there and lives under that builder's assurance. If you wanna bring civil action against somebody for running a business, if your builder's assurance says, no businesses, and we're allowing them to have a home-based business in there, if you wanna bring civil action against them, that's entirely up to you. We cannot enforce builder's assurance at all. Huntington subdivision has a builder's assurance, no parking on the street, period. We can't enforce that. Because it's a builder's assurance, it's not against the law.
However, if you have a city.
Come forward, come, come forward, please.
Me again? You don't want me.
Let me just tell you, let me say that there is a, there's a committee who is currently working on street parking issues.
Oh, I know, I got the email about that and the fire truck and you guys rode around and looked at it. All right, however, if we were to request a city ordinance about certain home-based businesses, I'm not talking computer stuff.
We're kinda out of the realm of what we're talking about tonight of this.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry, I'll sit down.
Yeah. And you and I, if you'd like to come visit me, come visit me, my door is always open.
I don't know, aren't you an Ohio State fan?
No, Oklahoma.
Oklahoma. Oklahoma State fan.
Boomer Sooner, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Every day, twice on Sundays or Saturdays, whatever. All right. Anybody else? One more, up, are you? Okay, cool. All right, good. Okay. Summary, Stacy, do you wanna say something? Uh, Stacy's one of our city council members.
Okay, I'm gonna kinda like turn sideways.
Well, just speaking to the mic, go ahead.
Okay. So, I, first of all, like, I'm super excited that you guys came here. And I think it's super interesting, for one, like, I think the whole park thing came to the city council as an idea because, like you said and you said, the lake was supposed to be a private lake. And then I know you guys are frustrated, the city have it, how do you think the city people feel? Like, it's been dumped on them and now that's kinda what has happened in the past. So like, those are things that we're trying to work towards on the city council is that like the planning commissions and all the different commissions that we've just started. We just started a water commission, that was the reason I got on the city council is because of the water problems. So, um, with all that, like, you inherit a lot of problems. And so you have to figure out, okay, how are we gonna solve this problem? So just like you said, how do you concentrate on an area? Now we have a lake? Well, you, someone's already said it tonight, you're looking at, um, can people drown in it? Is it around kids, what's happening to it? Nobody's monitoring it because it is now ours. So what do we have to do about it? So I think the original idea was a good idea, but that's why we have these meetings. So we can hear the opposition of like, what's the reality of that? Because you're the people that are living in that area. So, thank you for coming and venting that. Secondly, I would love, love, love to hear any ideas that you have on communication. My degree is in communication and I like to have feedback. I always try to enter things in, it's like, no one's trying to come forward with something with bad intentions. It's just misunderstandings and lack of knowledge. Do what now? Nobody, well, nobody right now, that's what I'm saying, like. Well, and I mean, that's what I'm saying, like, those are all problems, right? That have to be figured out, how do you solve that? But that is that area's problem. So I think the initial intent was like, oh, if it's a park and like Robin was saying, if it's a park, then that could open the door of like, one, that makes you an area that's safe because you can't have predators, can't live within a certain distance. Two, it gives more resources for us to look for grant money and stuff to pour into that, to improve that area. So there's lots of different things. We're not saying one way or the other, but that's the only way we can look at it is by conversation.
This is our problem.
It is your problem, but if you're asking the city to help with that problem, then we have to come to compromises and talk about it. and talk about it. And that's what we're doing. We're compromising, we're talking about it. I completely agree with you about Busby Lake. I hate driving past that and seeing it trashy and whatever. And I feel like that, especially when you go over the railroad tracks and then you've got the terrible parking lot of Dollar General. So like, I get it. I think those are all areas that we have to work on. But what I am saying is that I would like for you guys to offer any forms of communication about how you would like to be informed and how you could, you would benefit that and we would get more turnout like this. Because I've been on the city council, I was appointed to the position because nobody ran. This term, this upcoming election, only one person is running opposed. We do not have enough people on the water commission. There are lots of positions that you guys could fill. And some of the things that you brought up tonight had absolutely nothing to do with the park stuff, but everything to do with what you have concerns in your community that needs to be shared. And you need to feel comfortable sharing those things and you need to have an opportunity to share those things. The problems that you have with crime, if you're not getting a response from the police and you aren't talking to the mayor or you're not talking to your city council person, on the website, it has our email addresses. Do it. We will speak up for you. But what we don't know, we don't know. And I would like to be able to spend a lot of time in the city and visit with people and find out all the problems, but I, like you guys, I'm only aware of so far. I want to do better at that and I will do better at that after I get my last kid off to college this weekend. But I, I'm not running for mayor. I am not running for anything. I have lived in this community all 57 years of my life and I want to see it better because I, just like someone else is having their grandchildren, I want my kids to come back here. And I want them to enjoy coming back to the city of Ward in their hometown. So I know I've well gone over my three minutes, but...
You're a city council member, you have your choice.
If you have any suggestions or you have opportunities to tell me about communication, please.
That's okay. You got good shoes.
I know, I noticed that too.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Stacy. I will put a pitch in for city council. At the end of every city council meeting, there is a time period where you can come up and speak about anything. We allow you to come up and speak about white as skies blue. I don't care. There's a sign-up sheet to begin with. Please come and talk to us. Every time we have an ordinance or a resolution passed, we have a period of time where we ask for public input. And your opportunity to come up and speak for or against that particular ordinance or resolution is there. Get involved. I love the fact that you guys are here. And I will say that on Facebook. Those who come here are wanting to get involved. Those who sit behind a keyboard, we'll just leave it at that. But I will tell you, I get the overwhelming feeling, I get a feeling that you guys are kind of against this project for Willow Lake. Did I read y'all correctly?
Yeah.
I think so. So I, you know, we get, and then again, this goes to city council next week, it'll be up to city council before we make that decision. Several more here, I'm glad, because they get a chance to hear your inputs on this. Do we go forward with Willow Lake? Do we go forward with Busby? Do we not do either? Will be decision that city council will talk about next week. You have something else, Mr. Stevens, you'd like to say?
Can I ask a quick question?
Well, come on up, sir.
No, I don't need to.
Well, yeah, because I, I need you on the mic so I get it on tape.
Oh.
If you don't mind.
Oh, I mind. All right, so you're gonna vote on the 20th, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Because the deadline for this particular grant is the 30th.
Yeah. Is when?
August 30th.
August 30th?
Mm-hmm. That's the deadline for the grant.
Good, because I was gonna be out of town on the 20th.
No, no.
I wanted you to move the date just for me.
City council will vote on the 20th. Then we got 10 days to get it all together, to get it off to, to the grant authority.
Okay. So can we come to the meeting on the 20th?
It's absolutely, 100%.
We would love for you to.
Yeah, 100%.
So we can, we can come to any council meeting we want. Cool. I got nothing else to do.
And I'll tell you this, when I first came to office, one of the things that I did was had public, I had a town hall meetings. The same five people showed up. So I quit doing them. Three of them are my family.
What? Did you offer cupcakes or something?
Nope, didn't offer anything and nobody showed, anyone had, we didn't have virtual ones and nobody to come online.
All right.
So, having said all that, yes, come to city council meetings. Watch it online, of course, if you'd like. Come to city council, member. Contact your city council members on what your idea is on. Contact me. I have my cards there. I hand them out. You look on the website, my phone number's out there, my cellphone number, my email address. Text me, whatever you want to do. All right. Seconds. Anybody want?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all. Thank you for those sitting here that are on the council. I appreciate y'all hearing us.
All right. Second try. Anybody else like to come up and say anything? Yes, sir. Wait a minute. Come on up. I want to give everybody an opportunity.
One more thing I want to ask is, I want to ask the officer, if they did something like this, would you guys like have enough manpower to patrol over there all the time along with whatever else you guys have to do?
Actually, the city just, can you maybe come up?
Yeah, please. And you too can introduce yourselves.
You're on tape now. Don't say something bad.
In front of your boss.
No, actually, the city has actually just approved for our police department to expand. So we actually are just sending off four people to the police academy that are leaving out on Monday. And that will give us an extra police officer on every shift. So you'll actually have more police officers now than what we normally do on shift. So that's a pretty big plus for it.
Can you come forward? Well, I'll tell you what, I'll take, I'll talk about neighborhood watch.
I want to know about neighborhood watch.
All right, I'll talk to you. Hang on.
Plus, the geese at this place are... Have y'all ever been out there when the geese are out there?
Oh, geez, I got geese in my house too. Geese are everywhere, unfortunately, and there's not a whole lot you can do about it.
Yes, there is.
Unless you have a dog and the dog's keeping away.
Well, the game and fishes give us suggestions on how to get rid of them.
Shoot them?
Yes.
We can't do that. All right, okay. Now, you can, now you asked about neighborhood watch.
Yes.
Shortly after taking office, by resolution, we identified an individual in the city to be our neighborhood, well, individual, not, not a city employee, to be our neighborhood watch advocate. And she tried to get people involved. Nobody. Dead silence. If you want to get neighborhood watch going in your, in your community, Willow Lake, do it. Get together, have a cookout, invite the cops, invite me, invite the city council members, and let's do it. But it takes your input, not from the top down. I cannot and I will not dictate having a neighborhood watch. That is for the citizens to do on their own, because it's much more effective when you do it on your own.
That's fine. I'll get with you.
Y'all get it together. I'll tell you this, you get it together, we'll buy the signs for sure.
I swear, you're on tape.
I am on tape. If you didn't know before, I'll tell you right up, I'll tell you the truth. If you get it together, we will support it and we will provide the, the signs, which... What does it mean? It means y'all got together and you're looking out for one another. You already are, already. On your Facebook pages, on your, your neighborhood Facebook page, you guys look out for one another. It's almost a neighborhood watch without being called a neighborhood watch. And it's a beautiful thing. But, in any case, Ms. Robin, did you just have something you'd like to say?
Yes.
Okay.[1591.83]